Zoning border review is now in session. At present, we only have three members. Require five, so we're just going to give it a couple of minutes in hopes that Mr. Borden and Ms. Horowitz will be joining us.
No, I just texted Sue. Yeah, yeah, I actually spoke with her. Now she's still there. So the.
Here comes John. That's like Sue.
She's logging on now. It's great with.
Susan. All right, zoning board review remains in session. Hi Sue, how are you?
Good, my apologies guys, I didn't, I just got confused, so I apologize for being late.
No, don't apologize, so we'll, because there's a couple running remote. We'll just run through roll call, Mr. Borden.
Mr. Borden's present.
Thank you, Mr. Furell.
Present.
Mr. Reposa. And Ms. Horowitz.
Present.
And Chairman's present as well as our solicitor is remote too. So. There are four requests to continuances, while the first one we have to continue due to a conflict. But there's been a request to continue under old business, old business item two. Item three and item four, so the first petition of Chris and Mary Carollette. We have to continue that, the, there's been a request for the Aquinita Country Club, letters on file requesting a continuance that to our April meeting. Newport Solar is requested and Joseph Studwick have requested and. Continuance to April, I spoke with Newport Solar just prior to the meeting and there were two important pieces of information they were hoping they would have for tonight, but it had not arrived in time. And then the petition of George and Mary Corey. Has not gone before the planning board yet, so could I have a motion to continue those four petitions to our regularly scheduled meeting of April?
So moved.
Could I have a second, second, motion's been made in second to continue the petition of Chris and Mary Cowett. The Aquinita Country Club Inc. Newport Solar Inc. and George and Mary Corey. To our regularly scheduled meeting of April 21st. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed, okay. So the next item on the agenda is a petition by Karen Blumstead owners seeking dimensional variance. For two front yard setbacks under Article six, section B and special use permit, construct a covered porch addition to a single family dwelling. Are. Is Karen Blumstead on? Ms. Blumstead, I see you're logged on, but I don't quite hear you yet. I think your microphone's muted. Is she there? Did we lose her? No, she's there. Ms. Blumstead, if you can hear us. Our assistant town planner has promoted you, so you need to accept, so you can do it remotely. There she is. And now you need to unmute your mic.
Hello?
Ah, there you are.
Ah, thank you guys.
That was fun.
Yeah.
So. Ms. Blumstead, before we proceed, I know at the last meeting, there was a question whether I had a conflict or not.
Okay.
And I do not, because the land I live on is leased land and I am nowhere near you, I don't own the piece of land and I don't own the land out of bunch of property, so I'm fine.
Excellent, that's so good to hear.
I thought so. You know, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, could you just for the record, give Teresa your full name and address, please?
Sure, Teresa, my name is Karen Blumstead. And my address is 135 Bristol Ferry Road in Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay Karen, why don't you go ahead and explain to the board what you'd like to do?
Okay, thank you. I, I'm actually joined by an architect from CDA. Her name's Dominique Anderson, just in case there's questions, she'll probably be able to answer them better than I am.
Do you want us to, do you want us to swear her in and get her information as well?
If you wouldn't mind, that would be amazing.
That's our job, so. Could you please provide your full name, address and qualifications to Teresa, please?
So I, she's up, there she is.
Hi, my name is Dominique Anderson, my address is 24 Heath Street, Newport, Rhode Island, and I work at Cordston Design.
Okay, man, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and proceed then?
Okay. Um, so I'm looking to increase the size of my wraparound porch. And make part of it a screened in porch. Dominique's drawn up the plans here. And right now, the porch is six feet wide, which. Makes it very difficult to put furniture out there to actually enjoy the space. I understand that I'm zoned for a 20,000 square foot, 20,000 square foot lot, my lot is 7,000 square feet roughly. So. Not granting the variance for me would be more than a mere inconvenience to me and my family. The existing porch is in poor structural condition, the house was built about 80 years ago. And it needs to be rebuilt. I've lived in the house for about 12 years and after living with the six foot porch, I've found that this depth, it doesn't function for my family's needs. Having the eight foot depth would make the porch more usable for my family. And I'd like to rebuild the deteriorating porch, but I'd really like to add just those two feet. It would allow us to put furniture out there.
And. So obviously reading your petition, you want to increase the depth of the porch by two feet, which means you're approximately a foot and 10 inches already encroaching, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and is that encroachment on the. Davy Lane side or the Bristol Ferry roadside?
Uh, I'm going to defer to Dominique, but I believe it's the Bristol Ferry side.
We are building out towards the Bristol Ferry roadside and then to keep the roof pitch equal and meeting at an equal point, we'll need to build out a little bit towards the Davy Lane side as well, so that our two hip roof rafters can meet at the same point.
So you don't require any sort of variance for the Davy Lane side?
Uh, let's see.
Well, it's according to the application you don't.
We are going to need a 15 foot five front yard setback on the Davy Lane side.
Okay, so.
We had submitted a revised site plan when we were, oh, yes, you have it there.
See if I have a revised one.
And what's in the, is it chairman, the, the one, the version in the file only shows a. One setback.
Right. When did you send? In a change, because the file has what we have in front of us, which is showing just. The one request for a three foot, 10 inch front yard variance request, and that's it.
We had sent it in a couple of days later, someone had reviewed and then said that we needed to apply for two front yard setbacks, one for Bristol Ferry Road and one for Davy Lane, and we submitted a revised site plan.
Okay.
I sent it to Mike. Can't think of his last name, I apologize.
That would be Mike Ashola who's here.
Yes. He had asked me to revise it and send it back to him. Because he informed me, we needed a, as Dominique said, a revised plan to affect. The modification to the setback for Davy Lane.
Do you have anything, Mike? I mean, it's not the end of the world, I mean, we can ask you, if Mike can't find it, we can just ask you to request to modify what's here. The only other thing would be lot coverage. It does not look like you're requesting a lot coverage variance.
No.
Yeah, I've got to go through that, I'm just, yep. See anything, Mike? No, all right, we're not going to let you hold that up. So you're requesting, you want to modify your existing request to now request a 15 foot. To the.
The front yard setback.
The north side, to the north side, correct?
Correct.
Cause that, that's on Davy Lane because it's also considered a front yard, correct?
Yes, yes.
Got it. All right. Could I have a motion to. Allow the petitioner to modify their current application to now look there. To now they're seeking a 15 foot. Front yard variance to the side of the house that's on Davy Lane, the north side, because this is considered a corner lot. Mr. Chairman, so moved, could I have, I have a motion made in second to allow the petitioner to modify their petition, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, we're over that hurdle. So basically, there's the two variances, the three foot, 10 inch variance to the. We'll call it the west side. And a 15 foot variance to the north side, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And the one other thing then, I. I got a review with you because it's substandard lot of record. And requires a special use permit, so if this were to be allowed, would it allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Okay. Would it still provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect the neighboring property?
No.
No, it would not.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No, similar houses in the neighborhood have. Lot setback issues, the house across from her on the Davy Lane side has a similar setback and then behind her, that house has a similar setback as well.
Okay, would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add? There any questions from the board? No, Ben, anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. To what extent does the existing structure. Encroach on the setbacks to either the west or the north?
So the existing porch is about six feet and so we are looking to expand it to be in total eight feet, so we're going out towards the property line, two feet on the north and. About another foot on the west, I'm sorry, a foot on the north and about two on the west.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Yes, sir, alrighty, Sue, do you have any questions? Okay. Are there any butters or interested parties?
I was muted, I said I don't have any questions.
I could kind of see you about that, but it's on the record. Are there any butters or interested parties to this? No, anything in the file, Ben?
No, sir.
Okay. So Karen Blumstead is before the board, Tax Assessor's map 23 lot 47. Seeking a three foot, 10 inch front yard variance to the west, abiding Bristol Ferry Road. And a 15 foot front yard variance to the north. On Davy Lane side, it is a corner lot. The applicant has given testimony that is the least relief necessary, she also gave testimony that she does meet all of the special use permit criteria for a substandard lot of records, so, Mr. Borden.
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner has walked through with the chairman all the criterion for. A dimensional, I'm sorry, a. Special use permit for substandard lot of record and meets the criteria under the ordinance, so I vote to approve. I also ought to approve the three foot, 10 inch. Dimensional variance to the west and a 15 foot front yard slash side yard variance to the north. Six feet for a porch, porch is a permitted use in a residential zone, six feet is undersized and it's a reasonable request, it's the least relief necessary. And to deny what amount to more than a mere inconvenience, so I vote to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the. Variance, or I'm sorry, the special use permit for a substandard lot of record, the, and the two dimensional variances for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
I also approve both variances and special use permits for reasons cited.
Thank you, Ms. Horowitz.
I vote to approve both variances for reasons previously stated.
Thank you, Chairman also votes to approve the special use permit and both variances for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden, so it's been approved, Ms. Blumstead.
Oh, thank you so much.
I did just find the email that came from the applicant and it was sent on time and I apologize for the.
No worries, alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is petition by Todd Seabans owner seeking a dimensional variance for side yard setback. Special use permit to construct in addition to a single family dwelling on a nonconforming lot of record. And raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, indeed.
Full name and address for Teresa, please.
Todd Seabans, Todd Seabans, 40 East Main Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, Mr. Seabans, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do?
I'd like to remove the existing deck on the, I think it's the west side of the house towards 20, 28 East Main Road. And build an addition that would be two story, the lower story would be just expanding the living room or the, I guess it's a dining room downstairs and. Building a home office slash. Children's playroom upstairs, I guess is what we're calling this, it's essentially my, my company is up in Warwick, at the beginning of COVID, we moved to distance learning and. They gave you the option to move from, work from home and nobody, nobody went back to the office, so they're closing it down, so I, I'm in my bedroom as it stands now and I've got to have a room where I can close the door and. That's right.
So everybody will work remote.
66 people, no more business, yeah, so everybody, well, everybody, everybody else loved the idea, I'm, I'm not crazy about the idea of no people all day long, but.
I'm kind of looking at your lot plan, you're. Yeah, yours, your house is sort of on an.
It's kiltered, yeah, it's, and it's interesting, so even if you drew a straight square.
Right.
It would be a corner that, and that deck, right now, the deck is, I believe, 16 feet off of the back of the house and as we started to build it, Cliff Rodricks is my, the person, is the architect, let me know that it was kiltered, you know, kind of kitty, kitty corner. So we chopped it back to 12 feet just to try to get closer and he said, you know what, no matter what you do, you're going to have one corner that's going to be close, so, so did the best we could and figured we'd go from there.
Do you actually require a point?
It was a question, yeah, it was, it was a question, yeah, I mean, just trying, trying to.
Doesn't sound right. That's. It's a big lot. It is a big lot. So let's see, so. What's that?
There isn't a, it's filled in in error.
Okay, so he doesn't require a lot coverage variance, right? No?
No.
Okay. Did you just seek in a nine, 9.6 foot side yard variance to the south?
I guess it's the south.
It would be the south.
Okay.
Cause that's.
Towards 28 East Main Road.
Yes.
Who coincidentally is my builder. Thomas Hume's Construction will be doing the work and that's who lives there.
Well, this said south, says, says side south.
That's probably right, if East Main.
No, it's not towards East Main Road.
No, it's not towards East Main Road, it's, I thought, I thought it was west.
Yeah, it's because of the way the house is, you're far enough from East Main Road, you back off Coolawat Lane, but you canted towards the property.
Correct.
Right, so that's where it is.
These old houses, right, 1893.
So you're putting an addition on.
Yes, sir.
So that you can actually retain your job.
I, I mean. I like the way you put it. Yes.
Okay, and above and beyond that, you don't require. Why does he require a special, is that narrow too? Our 30 zone is 26,000, oh, yes, you're right, thank you, Mr. Borden, we don't get those very often, you're like 26,000, you're like, this is great. All right, so it is a lot of record, 26,000 feet, square feet, so I do have to run through that, so.
Okay.
If this were allowed, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Would it provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect your neighbor's property?
No.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks?
I don't believe so, no.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No, sir.
Okay, alrighty. Anything else you'd like to add? Any questions?
Unless you have any questions.
Any questions from the board? Sue, any questions?
No.
Okay, any butters or interested parties that want to speak to this?
If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand app to give public comment.
Okay. Mr. Furell, anything in the file?
No, sir.
Alrighty, so. Todd Seabans is before the board for Tax Assessor's map. All righty. So Todd Seabans is before the board for Tax Assessor's Map 63, Lot 7, seeking a nine-foot-six, a nine-foot-six-inch side yard setback to the south or proposing an addition onto his house. They're going to be removing the existing deck that's there. He also required a special use permit for a substandard lot of record, of which Mr. Seabans has testified that he does meet all that criteria. So that being said, Mr. Borden, please.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the petitioner's testimony regarding the special use permit for a substandard lot of record meets all the criteria under the ordinance, and I vote to approve. I also vote to approve nine-foot-six-inch side yard variance. Petitioner is making a reasonable request for an addition. Petitioner has plenty of lot coverage, and to deny him the use of his residential permitted use to expand and create an office would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. I vote to approve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borden. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit for the substandard lot of record for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden. In addition, I also vote to approve the requested dimensional variance, also for the reasons cited.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa?
I also vote to approve for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden and Mr. Furell.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. The chairman also votes both the special use permit and the dimensional variance request for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden. So you're all set, Mr. Seabans?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Free to go.
Free to go. Have a good night. So the next item on the agenda is petition by William and Elizabeth Noonan, seeking dimensional variance of front and side yard setbacks and special use permit to reconstruct a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record located at 1287 Narragansett Ave, in Prudence. Raise your right hand?
Sure.
Swear to tell the truth?
I will.
You walked in the door. I'm fumbling through, going, who's she representing tonight? And then I looked and I said, herself.
It's me. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Elizabeth Noonan. The other person in the room is my husband, William Noonan, and we're here, while I'm normally here, on behalf of applicants. I am here for myself this evening and my husband. We've owned a house on Prudence Island for at least the last 15 years, and we're looking forward to actually making Portsmouth our permanent home at some point. So this is a plan to demolish our existing residence and build it into something that could be full, full-time living, essentially. There's two lots involved, lots 55 and 56, and rather than try to squeeze two houses on that, we're proposed to merge the lots together. What I'm, the special use permit is needed because even with merging those lots together, it's a substandard lot of record. We are asking for the front yard setback, but it's consistent with the same front yard setback that is for our existing house. It'll just be extended a little bit to the east, so we'll be continuing that same line, but we need the front yard setback for that. And then because the coastal feature is actually coming closer to us, we'd like to move the house five feet to the west, to the property line to the west, to try to move it away a little bit. It's currently, it's a 15-foot setback, and we'd like to move it the five feet. I heard your questions to the prior applicants regarding the special use permits for non-conforming lots as to fire protection, light and air, the character of the neighborhood, the lot coverage of adjacent neighborhoods, and no substantial detriment to the neighbors. If you look at our, the answer to that is that there will, all of those things are adequate and will not diminish the neighborhood at all. We have very limited butters. If you see, behind us is over almost 200 acres of conservation land. The neighbor to one side, I think she might be Margaret, on your call-in is my mother-in-law, who is on the east side to us, and then our neighbors to the west, their house is actually much further closer to the water than ours, so our house will have like very little impact on them whatsoever. So we have architectural renderings there. It's supposed to be two bedrooms, and that's what we're here for this evening.
Okay. So quick question for you.
Yes.
You wouldn't be opposed then, because you had already stated your intentions on a merged lot, so if the board so chose to place a condition that if approved, the lots have to be merged, you don't have an issue with that?
So long as we, final approval, because we have, from here, we have to go to Coastal Resources Management. So if it gets approved by them
Why did you get approval by CRMC?
Correct. Yes. And we have our septic is pending right now.
I'm just curious. Wouldn't you require a house fronting not on a public way?
What do you mean?
Because there's already a house on the lot. It's not new construction.
Okay, so they don't require that?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, you know, it's going to be demolished.
Well, still, the, the whole, the point of not fronting on a public way is that the public safety has access to the property.
Right.
There's already a, a house on the
Then they have access to.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Wanted to make sure.
That's my interpretation anyway.
Thanks.
So any questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
Sue, anything?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Do we, have any butters or interested parties that want to speak? If there are any on the Zoom and you want to speak, you can use the raise your hand thing. So before voting, I would like to propose a condition that both lots, 55 and 56 be merged pending approval of CRMC. If CRMC approves this, then this is conditional on the lot to be merged. If CRMC denies it, then the lots do not have to be merged. I have a second. Motion been made in second to place the condition on this petition. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So William and Elizabeth Noonan before the board for Tax Assessor's Map 74, Lots 55 and 56, seeking a 18.1-foot front yard variance, five-foot side yard variance, and a special use permit for a substandard lot of record for the purpose of moving existing structure and building a brand-new structure on a property on Prudence Island. So, Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner walked through the criterion for the special use permit for a substandard lot of record, and it meets the criteria, and I vote to approve. I also vote to approve the variances. This is going to improve the site, improve the residence. It's a reasonable request. And I vote to approve. To deny would amount to a hardship more than a mere convenience.
Thank you, Mr. Borden. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit for a substandard lot of records for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden, and in addition, vote to approve the front and side yard setback variances for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reposa?
I vote to approve the special use permit and also the front and inside yard setbacks for reasons stated by Mr. Borden.
Thank you very much. Ms. Horowitz? You're muted, Ms. Horowitz.
I vote to, I vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you very much. Chairman also votes to approve both the special use permit and the both dimensional variance for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden, so we're all set.
Thank you very much. I think that is the fastest zoning here in my 30-year history doing these things. So thank you very much.
It's a little faster than the plan in Board of Appeals last week, but not by much. Now, before we adjourn, I would just like, I believe Mike has something to let everyone know. So Mike, on behalf of the board, I know I really like to thank you for everything you've done. You make our jobs easier by the information you've provided, bar none, ever, in all of my years being here. So very much appreciate it. It's going to be hard shoes to fill, for sure.
I missed something. Is Mike leaving?
Mike is leaving us, yes.
Mike, no. Stay.
What do you want to say?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would also like to echo your sentiments as well. I've been on this board for over 20 years, and Mike has brought a lot to the table in terms of his organizational skills and providing the board with the tools and information they need to make more informed decisions, and I'd like to thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, Mike.
That being said, I have a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion been made in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue, hope everything's going well.
Not really, but I'm here. We've Thank you. Okay. Bye.
Who's selling shoes? Can't leave. We have some. Reese, you got to do both? You got to do both, yeah?